Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the closed session and reconvene in open session.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now in open session. I would entertain a motion to certify the closed session by affirming that while in closed session, there was no formal action taken and that only public business matters lawfully exempted from opening meeting requirements were discussed, and only public business matters identified in the motions convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered. I would entertain a motion to certify this.
So may.
Second. Roll call, Crystal.
Stephanie Agnew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Honeycock?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Here. Yes, yes.
Thank you, Crystal. The special meeting is now adjourned. If you would indulge, and I apologize to the audience and those watching, if you will give us five minutes, we're gonna take a bathroom break and we'll start right back up. Thank y'all. Good evening. I'd like to call to order our South Hill Town Council regular meeting for Monday, August the 12th, 2024. Shall we pray? Our most heavenly Father, as we are present here tonight, it is obvious and evident, dear heavenly Father, that you have had your hand upon each and every one of us, whether it be the weather, whether it be personal situations, we can always count on you. And dear heavenly Father, you know, part of our life is a sense of pride, and we're getting ready soon to say the pledge, which gives everyone an opportunity for that sense of pride of our country. And dear heavenly Father, we also exemplified the last two weeks of the Olympics, and it doesn't matter whether you're a sports fan or not, when you saw that USA, you had a special place, that we took that pride and we pulled for those individuals or a team to do well and to show well, and exemplify that pride that we all have deep inside of us. So dear heavenly Father, as we go forward tonight and in the future, let us all exemplify that, whether it be with our family or our friends, that we are happy and blessed at what we do and where we're at and what we're doing in life, dear heavenly Father, because again, we are a light under your path and everything that you have done for us. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Shall we stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank y'all. Okay. Roll call, Crystal.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Mike Moody?
Here.
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 Okay, thank you. Council, you have in front of you the agenda for our August meeting. May I have a motion for approval?
So may.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. There's a lot of fun things about this job, and one I'm getting ready to do now is to talk about an individual who I developed a friendship with about eight years ago. And this individual and I, we sort of came in new, he probably not as green as I was, but I was pretty green, and he and I have been through a lot together. It is with pride that I've been around this guy. This guy has shown me how to use a gun, not necessarily to use it, but how to use one. He showed me what it's like to go into a smoke-filled abandoned building and people hollering and screaming at you, but you gotta be alerting on your job. He's an individual who asked, who did what I asked him to do, not necessarily he had to, but I think it was out of a respect. This individual has, he's been a good friend to me, he's been good for this community and this citizenship. This individual is now moving on to new adventures, and I can only hope the best for him. I'm sure this community will say the same and exemplify the same of his appreciate, of our appreciation to him and his dedication to his job and to this town. So I will step down and I would like the town manager and I to present something to Mr. Stuart Bowler. So Stuart, on behalf of the town, this is a certificate of appreciation presented to Chief Stuart Bowler, the great honor and appreciation for your commendable and dedicated eight years of service for the town, I haven't seen that long, of the South Hill Police Department. Never forget the difference you made as a town, the police department, and to the community. Signed by Dean Mayor Laird and Kelly Reitz, Town Manager, dated August the 12th, 2024.
Do you have a picture for Enterprise? Is Enterprise here? Okay, can we go back, Lee?
We'll do a rewind.
Yeah. Let's try one on the other side.
On the other side.
Yes, on the other side. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Put that on a milk carton or in the post office. All right. Okay, all right, council. Citizens, to address council, remind everyone, limited to three minutes. Stephanie Webb, Benchmark Community Bank. If you would come up to the microphone, ma'am, and state your name.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Webb, and I'm representing Benchmark Community Bank tonight. We are asking permission to use the town park facility for our bi-annual company picnic on Sunday afternoon, September 15th. We're bringing, you know, not only the employees, but the families are invited for our family fun and using our resources. We'll have a couple food trucks and an ice cream truck as well.
Okay, all right, and I assume that this has been vetted? Kelly, you and Crystal? Okay, all right.
Done.
I don't see a motion or anything.
Motion, motion to accept.
Yes, second.
All right, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay?
Thank you, that was easy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Have a good night, thank you, Stephanie.
Charles Wright? Rotary Club? Okay, all right. Wade Crowder? State your name again, sir, please.
I am, I gotta look at my paper.
Oh, okay.
Okay, my name is Wade Crowder. The front door is broke, been broke for two weeks here. Handicap people can't get in in a wheelchair. It needs to be replaced. You spend $2 million on a water line for one person, you can fix the front door where the handicap can get in for a lot of handicap people. Okay, Oakwood Cemetery over here, that's the worst-looking cemetery in this area. Canaan, Lake Cross, and Oakwood, they're at the very bottom. They got headstones laying down on the ground, I've talked to them, they went over there and they set up some, and the rest of them still laying on the ground. I went over there and marked them. They need to be fixed. Some of these graves ain't numbered 50 years old, so the new section y'all burying y'all's family in, in 50 years, they gonna be laying on the ground. So they need to be fixed on the cemetery. Out there at the school today, we had a mess out there, cars backed up, trucks coming up in line, they couldn't sit there for 45 minutes, they pulling out and going the wrong way in traffic. The school buses were back, back at Felton Brothers, couldn't get into school to pick up the kids. They need to do something with the getting in and out of the school. Something needs to be done with it, and I can't tell you what, I like to tell you what to do with it. Circle the building with the vehicles, let them circle the building, make a driveway run out, but I ain't educated and got that college education, I got common sense. Okay, the CDA. I tried to find out what the rent on the Makos Market is over here. They said they can't tell me. They gets 97% of the proceeds from the public, from the government, so he should be able to tell me, but he can't. So the best way I can figure out, with the help I get, the people in there now, they're nice people, they pay $500 a month. That includes all the booths, shelves, display racks, refrigerator boxes, slices, cooking utensils, even got an ice cream machine. Best I can still tell, the town is paying the water bill, the light bill, water, sewage, and garbage. The town's paying that stuff now, and then they give the people a van to drive, and they paying for the license, insurance, maintenance, and gas. I mean, that ain't right. For $500, it'd be better off as a homeless shelter, and let the homeless people go back there and cook some there and cook and serve the public. I mean, they can do the same thing these people do. Something is crooked here, it seems like to me. $500, market value, that ain't market value for everything. And I, the clock ain't running, and I can talk as long as I want to, but I, whoop, 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 but I'm gonna give y'all a break. And I said everything on my list I wanted to say, and if you let me do it every time, I wouldn't have to fight that clock.
Thank y'all. Paul.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. I want everybody to know that I came from Richmond and made it here on time, and I find damn little excuse that you can't get from that room to this one on time, okay? The other thing is, a man from out of town, he don't live here, ain't never lived here, but he watches this zoo that we got going on here, and he told me last week, when he came into Lost Treasures, that he can't understand why anybody would wanna come to South Hill and live because of you and us. We need to get along with each other, you need to work like you're working for us rather than hiding everything. It's just like this man said, "We have a right to know what you are doing with our money, 'cause you are working with our money." Thank you.
How's everyone doing?
State your name for me, sir.
Oh, well, good evening, I'm John Duffer. So, you know, I just wanna apologize for taking your time up with this, but I really don't know what else to do, so we're gonna do it. Approximately two weeks ago, the Chamber of Commerce Facebook page posted something that included the asking of several general questions to business owners, like, for instance, quote, "Would you like more visibility from your business, for your business, et cetera?" And if you answered me to any of those questions, then one could sign up for some service or what have you, to the tune of $14.42 per week. Now, below the composition was a picture of a pamphlet, a booklet, et cetera, that one might assume would be included in that pricing. Well, personally, I found the idea and the post to be vague and confusing and a little bit ill-conceived. It was also grammatically incorrect, which I find sort of, you know, there's a dichotomy there. But anyway, um, so, you know, there were no names attached to the post, and I certainly did not think of Sandra Tanner when I was reading it, you know, maybe she had written it, I mean, I don't, I just am not that far thinking. So, um, so I commented, and you know, a lot of you don't know me, and a lot of you who do probably don't like me, and that is wonderful, but, um, you know, I'm kind of off the cuff, and my sense of humor is not for everyone, but I just said I'd rather eat glass than sign up for that. And that may not be the most appropriate, but it's not, you know, I've said a lot worse to, you know, maybe some of you. Anyway, um, so, you know, there was no mal-intent on my part, I wasn't trying to hurt anybody's feelings, wasn't directing at anyone, it was just impulsive. A couple of days later, Sandra Tanner decided it was, it was fair and appropriate to share that comment with my employer in an attempt to get me in trouble or get me fired. And so, then she blocked my ability to participate in the chamber's post. Well, if she had the ability to do, to do that, wouldn't it also state a reason that she could have just simply chosen to delete my comment if it was so offensive, rather than intentionally cause me harm? The whole thing really hurt my feelings, shocked me, I've only ever been kind to Sandra, you know, asking, you know, her mother if she needed any help, and, you know, on and on, I got 30 seconds. So, anyway, losing my job would be devastating for me, and the fact that she would not be able to realize that, that's recklessness, it's not leadership, and I'm just trying to shed some light on the unprofessional practices and mean spirit and character, and you can process that as you will. Thank you.
I don't have any real complaints, I've got some questions.
You would state your name, please.
Oh, Julius Height, veterinarian at Nature Veterinary Center, and come April the 13th of 2025, will have been in South Hill for 50 years. We, at Nature Veterinary Center, have been dealing with a problem that I've, we've tried to sort out and tried to find out what's going on. We've been without phone service for over a month, we have been, we are still without, after six weeks, we're without internet service, and we can't use the charge card machine or the fax machine. And in the situation, when I first came to South Hill, we didn't use much of, any of that, but now we've become very dependent upon it. We've, I've talked to several people, we've had trouble talking with the company that's taking care of it. Jennifer Ashworth, now, practice manager, has done remarkable things, they finally brought us a, a base to use to where we could open one line where we can receive calls, and then Jennifer got into the manual and looking at the modem and figured out how to, 'cause client would call and it wouldn't say anything about us, it would just give a number to call, which was not our number, to leave a message. And that message, then, we couldn't retrieve, but Jennifer figured it out and got it where we can at least get a message, and she can call it, and we can call the clients back if we miss the call. But my gross decreased by 28% in July, and it's, this year, we, it's been a banner year for us, so I think it's been good to us, and we've been 20 and 30% over last year, except in July, so we were, we were way down. People are getting grasped, we've got one line in now, but doing a referral is very difficult, clients are getting upset with me because, as everyone's gotten in technology, where you want to just call on the phone and try to get a referral, nobody knows what to do. And so, you finally talk around, get to somebody that can take the referral for you, but it's, it's really, and I can't find out, they keep telling us two weeks, two weeks, technician's coming in two weeks, well, we finally had a technician come, and he brought the modem and hooked it up and said, but he didn't know anything about it, so Jennifer had to take it from there. But I'm just wondering, how many people or merchants are dealing with this?
My question, Dr. Height, for clarification, to your knowledge, to staff, I meant to staff, to Kelly, to your knowledge, is anyone else in that area having that same problem or difficulty?
There are a couple problems in that area due to the fire in July. I believe it affected some telephone and internet lines, is my understanding, and we're aware of Dr. Height's issue. We've actually, I know CJ and myself have been talking to Bright Speed and have put in contact with the government representative, so.
I'm having trouble with my background.
Kelly, have they given you any sort of timeframe? You know, a telephone is a lifeline to a business.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, they haven't given, I don't know if they've given you, but they, they talked specifically with Dr. Height.
I think the manager was in the office today, and he didn't give us any indication when, when this would be fixed.
Is there anything in the contract with them or anything that we can do to?
I don't think there's anything with that between the consumer and them.
Oh, I know that.
I certainly touch base with our contract.
Yeah, we paid a $409 bill for the month of July, and we had no service. They said they gonna make an adjustment, I hope.
I'm very sorry you're going through that.
One other question, oh, the sign that's up there that says, "Driving text, oh, say or no," we find that a little bit off color, because everybody knows what that means.
Okay, all right. Under administrative reports, we have here would have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So may I.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Under items for approval.
Yes, Counsel, Mr. Mayor, I have, the first item is a South Hill Volunteer Fire Department bucket drive request. Chief Vaughn requests permission for the fire department to hold a bucket drive fundraiser on Saturday, the 31st of August. Donations will be accepted at six locations throughout town, which are included in your report, and the recommended motion is to approve the request to hold a bucket drive fundraiser on Saturday, August 31st, from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Then next, I have a public hearing for conveyance of real property. Town Council is considering conveying real property, which consists of the parking spaces in Lee's Court subdivision, to the Lee's Court Homeowners Association. A public hearing is required to hear comments on the conveyance of real property. The recommended motion is to advertise for a public hearing on the conveyance of real property at 7:00 p.m. on the September 9th, 2024, meeting in Town Hall.
So may I.
All the, in, all those in, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
And if I may, speak for Mr. Wright, that was on the agenda earlier, I can present his request as well, since he wasn't here. They are doing a, my understanding is they're doing a Rotary Club event, I believe it's Thursday, September 19th, in the park, and I do believe they would like to serve alcohol to their club members, so that was the reason for them coming to you this evening, for their request of approval. It's already been slated by Finance Department, so all is well on our end.
Okay, so, Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
What is the normal policy with regard to service of alcohol? Is that something that is approved only on request by a council? What is the policy on that?
Yeah, the policy is that park requests, use of the park, the pavilion, the upper field, all that does run through the Finance Office, and it's approved internally unless there's usually, unless there's usually food trucks or alcohol being served, and that does come before counsel for approval. That's what our current policy states.
And if I remember correctly, we had one last month that we voted on and approved, was that correct?
We had a food truck.
Right, okay.
Did that include alcohol?
Yes, it did.
Yeah, usually, usually they only come before you if they include alcohol. And obviously, we make sure that they obtain the proper licenses and that sort of thing.
They have to get that permit or whatever.
Yes.
So, Crystal, we have a motion and a second, correct? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Mayor, Town Counsel, good evening. We have a couple things to talk about tonight. The first one is an easement for Dominion Power to run power over to Empire Mecklenburg Electric at the water tank site on Tunstall. The town of South Hill owns property at the termination of Tunstall Street, Microsoft had purchased the property past that. On the town's water tank parcel, the town previously granted an easement to Empire Mecklenburg Electric to top, to install a fiber optic mode. Empire needs electricity from Dominion Power to run this fiber optic node, which is at the corner of the water tank line. The easement should not impact future of the town's property, as the line is well within the setback and will not interfere with any of the water lines that are underground there.
So, Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move for the town to grant an easement to Dominion Virginia Power utilizing the easement agreement provided by DVP, and reviewed by the town attorney and authorized the mayor and/or the town manager to execute easement documents, and return them to Dominion Virginia Power for recording.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
All right, the second one tonight, need you to, need y'all to look at an easement agreement for Mid-Atlantic Broadband Communities Corporation. The town of South Hill owns property at the termination of Tunstall Road. Previously, the town granted an easement to MBC, so, just past our water tank, so that they could put in buildings to facilitate their fiber. Due to the growth, MBC needs to expand the property to a property that adjoins the town property. And so, what they're asking for is an easement on the remainder of the property the town owns for the installation of fiber optic and power lines to the adjoining property. MBC officials are aware of the water line serving Microsoft's facility is in this area, as well as the walking path that you have given an easement to for Microsoft to go from the contractor's tradesman parking area down to the campus.
The easement's going to property that adjoins the town property?
It's property, easement across us to get to that property, so they have access. Their, that property is on the other side of the walking path, so it's behind the water tank, it's the wooded side.
Who owns it?
Who owns it? Lake Country Area Agency on Aging.
And CJ, if I may, you said that they're aware, again, that the water line is running right through there, so when they go to do whatever they're gonna do there, it won't enable anything?
It will, it will not hurt anything.
Okay, all right.
You don't foresee any future problem, you can't predict the future, but is this relatively normal for them to do?
Yeah. Their, their easement goes up within, I'm gonna say 50 feet, I, I'm not looking at it right now, but it's about 50 feet short of the property line, and so they just need to go across the rest of it, is what they're asking.
I can see the blank spots, one, okay, thank you. Counsel, your pleasure? Your motion?
I move for the town to grant an easement to Mid-Atlantic Broadband Communities Corp, utilizing the resolution developed by the town attorney, authorize mayor, town manager to execute the easement documents upon completion by the town attorney, and return them to Mid-Atlantic for recording.
Second. Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
And the last one tonight, seeking, Dominion Power is seeking another easement agreement. The town owns property between Interstate 85 and the Microsoft property. When that property was sold, the town reserved about a 50-foot strip all the way down through there, right beside the interstate. Again, this is at the end of Tunstall Road, but it's right beside the interstate. Dominion Power is seeking an easement across the town property for the installation of an electric transmission line to supply the electric substation for the Microsoft site at Tunstall Road. The transmission line will be an overhead and will cross Interstate 85 at this point. The easement is for 120 foot wide, and Dominion is offering the town $5,000 for this easement, and it will last for 40 years, per Virginia Code, Section 152-2100B.
And CJ, from my memory, we, we secured that easement for access for our standpoint, the town standpoint, correct?
Yes, sir.
For access to something?
Yeah, for the sewer line that runs up and down through there.
All right, and in your opinion, this wouldn't affect that in any way?
We were first afraid of it, and then they've sent us some plans and all, because we didn't want them to have their foundations on top of sewer lines, so they're gonna keep it off of that, so everything is, is okay.
So, you feel comfortable with it now?
Everything's good with this, yes.
Okay, and I know, I'm gonna ask the obvious, we've got all that in writing, and that would be part of the package.
Yeah, the town attorney's reviewing everything, make sure it's right.
And it'd be like, so both sides, the attorneys, would be a formal document and recording?
It's, it's all included, I think, pretty much in here, yeah.
Okay. This transmission line is going over top of the interstate?
Yes, sir.
Somebody give me a break.
No, I just, I just have a question, you know, it said for 40 years, is that, is that usually the case? I mean, for something like this?
That's the state code, it'll probably be renewed at that point.
Okay, all right, well, I don't wanna be here, so anyway. All right, no, that's, that's the only question I have, you know, okay.
All right. Yes, please.
I can do it.
You got it, please.
I move for the town to grant an easement to Dominion Virginia Power, utilizing the easement agreement provided by DVP and reviewed by the town attorney, and further authorize the mayor, town manager to execute the easement agreement and other associated documents, and return them to Dominion Virginia Power for coordination.
I'll second that.
Discussion. The $5,000 will cover the cost, any costs that comes to the town for the, for this to take place, correct?
The $5,000 is to go across property owned by the town.
That's what I'm looking at right here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Thank y'all.
Okay, Counsel, in your packet are reports, informational to the town council, require no action, I have a motion to accept as presented.
So may I.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Did you get a second? You have a motion?
You got a motion to?
Motion, I had a first, did I have a second?
A motion.
Got to hear a second? Okay, I'm sorry, do I have a second?
You got a second now.
Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. In your packet, Counsel, is an appointment in regards to the Board of Building Code Appeals. James Jones' term on the Board of Building Code Appeals expires on September 13th, 2024. Mr. Jones has been contacted and agrees to serve another five-year term beginning September the 14th, 2024, and ending September the 13th, 2029. I am looking for a motion for acceptance.
So moved.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
Do I have a second, Crystal? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Other business, Counsel? Hearing none? Meeting adjourned.